For someone to prepare in the chapter 231 of the laws of 1976 under the Open Public Meetings Act, Mr. Campbell noted prior to public that the notice of the date, time, location, and agenda of this meeting to the extent known was provided at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner. Number one, by posting such notice on the Public Announcement Board of Lake Forest Board of Education Offices in the Lakewood Township Municipal Building. Number two, by emailing such notice with the Office of the Asbury Park Press. Number three, by filing such notice with the Board Secretary. Number four, by mailing such notice to all individuals who requested and paid for a copy of same. Mr. Zlacken.
Here.
Mr. Nagdeman. Mr. Newhouse. Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Tendler. Mr. Tricer. Mr. Jackson Byers. Mr. Bender. We will form. This is the executive session resolution. Whereas the Public Board of 1975 with the chapter of chapter 231 notice of the Open Public Meetings Act provides that a public body may not exclude from the public any, uh, any meeting to discuss any matter described herein unto the public body as first adopted a resolution. And whereas Board of Education of the Township of Lakewood has determined that the following matters must be discussed in closed session and that the public must be excluded from the said deliberations. And whereas the Board of Education of the Township of Lakewood have determined that subject matter of this closed session falls within those matters described in subsection 7B of the Open Public Meetings Act. Now therefore it be resolved that this Board of Education of the Township of Lakewood, County Ocean, State of New Jersey, that Board of Education in closed session may discuss one or follow, one or, one of the following subject matters. Collective bargain agreements, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations other than stated in number four involving the employment or appointment of termination of employment, and any deliberations occurring after the public hearing. Which subject matter constitutes a subject matter described in subsection 7B of the Open Public Meetings Act? It be further resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Lakewood will disclose to the public the subject matter of the said closed discussions as soon as the matter has been resolved and that the determination can be disclosed to the public. This is the motion to go into executive session. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Zlacken. Ms. Gonzalez. Mr. Nagdeman. Mr. Newhouse. Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Tendler. Mr. Tricer. Mr. Jackson Byers. Mr. Bender. This time we'll go into a closed session. Uh, I suspect we're probably going to be out sometime around 7:30 or maybe a little after.
How are you?
Well, good.
Good to see you. I'm covering tonight. Life levels to be the greatest.
I kind of asked for a cheese and people be like, ah. Yes, I did take your order. If we could ask the board to come, uh, to session or for member please. Okay, if we could have a roll call in public, we apologize too. As I said earlier, uh, we were discussing with employees who opted to have the discussion private. We should get it right. Uh, we'd like to get this meeting called to order. So do we have a quorum? Uh, if you could do a roll call so we could get this going. Bless you, bless you. Uh, that, that's great. Thank you for that sneeze, bless you. If we could have a roll call. Could I get a motion to come back into, uh, public, uh, public session here? Mr. Zlacken. Ms. Gonzalez. Mr. Nagdeman. Mr. Newhouse. Mr. Rodriguez. Over to here. Mr. Tendler. Mr. Tricer. Mr. Jackson Byers. Mr. Bender. Good form. Okay, we can go to the next order of the agenda, please. We do have, uh, with the permission of the Board President and Mr. Jackson, our Vice President, uh, joins us. In fairness to the public, I would ask that we go out of turn because there is someone who's signed up. Uh, so that's okay with the board? Uh, the person, past, uh, Governor Wilson? You're not, okay, so, um, that's only person who's signed up and Glenn has opted not to speak. So now we've done that, so. We have some presentations here first of the Superintendent's Recognition Award.
This month Superintendent's Recognition Award goes to a student who has worked extremely hard and is beyond deserving of his recognition. He has applied to Ocean County College at the College of New Jersey where he plans to study biomedical engineering. He has a GPA of 4.6, six and is ranked the number four in his class. This academic achievement has made him eligible for the New Jersey Stars Program where he can attend Ocean County College for two years on an academic scholarship. This student is very involved in the community and his school. He works as a waiter, plays tennis, is a member of the Music Honors Society, peer youth leadership group, and the marching band. He is the president of the National Honor Society and Spanish National Honor Society. He volunteers his time to help with fundraisers that support veterans and children in need. Many of his teachers have stated that he is one of the most driven students they have ever had the pleasure of getting to know. He is full of ambition and on a direct path to success. This student has evolved into a true potent Lake River pioneer and we are proud to have him as one of our own. Please join me congratulating Ariel Julie.
All right, well Ariel is not here, but make sure Ms. Bender's tomorrow. If you could, go to the high school and give him his award. Um, but that's amazing, okay?
That person, there weren't two, there weren't two super when you got them out.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't that person. I checked that, that's why if he, if Ariel was here, uh, we would have come out of closed session. But that's why you got to come here, so. Next. Next on the agenda is the Financial Order Report that was prepared by Lurk. It's been seen from Higgins, LOP. Rob and Higgins here to give a presentation. And if we could ask, as we usually do, to move the podium there so the order could address the public and the board in such a way since we are accountable to the public.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight. Uh, we recently, uh, back in December filed the board's required statutory annual audit for the 2016-17 fiscal year. Uh, each year district is required to have an independent external audit, uh, due on December 5th every year following the end of the full year. Uh, so that was filed back in December. There's two files, two reports that get filed with each state. One is your confidence about the financial report, which includes all of your financial statements and related note disclosures. And the second report is the financial report, which discusses the results of the audit. In the big report, in the CAPR, uh, you have an audit opinion in there. You receive what we call an unmodified audit opinion for 2016-17. Uh, basically means that your financial statements as presented in the CAPR are presented in reports of generally accepted accounting principles. Uh, it's basically the highest level of opinion in order to give assurance that your financial statements are fairly stated. Just to talk about the financials briefly. Uh, district ended the year, uh, with revenues which exceeded expenditures by about $300,000. Uh, the result of that was a cumulative deficit of about $4.3 million as of June 30th, 2017.
Through the chair. If you could just explain that because I'm not too smart. Uh, we had a more money revenue than expenses?
That's correct. For 2016-17, you had your revenues exceeded your expenses by about $300,000.
So, but we're in deficit anyway?
You're in a deficit, uh, that's a cumulative deficit?
From prior years?
From prior years, error in fault.
So last year to the credit of the people here, there was a surplus, a revenue surplus or more money than spent?
More money than spent for the current fiscal year, which lowered the cumulative deficit from previous year.
So previously it was, the deficit, now let me ask this question though, and I, because, uh, we really want to understand this and the board has asked me as they reviewed your report to ask the questions. Does that include the millions that we got from the state?
That does, that cumulative deficit of 2016.
Now, now the revenue more than expenditures.
Yes.
Does that mean when you, I, I know the answer, but they want to hear your view. The revenue includes the millions upon millions upon millions of dollars of loans from the state. That went into your revenue number?
That's correct. For 2016-17, the district received about five, four, five and a half million dollars in state aid, additional state aid, which is included in the 16-17 numbers. That contributed to the revenue over expenditure.
So we really weren't in revenue, uh, black if you will, positive as opposed to red. We got loans, I wasn't here then, maybe you can help me. We got loans of millions which bumped up our revenue.
Yes.
Well, being a simple Lakewood graduate, don't loans have to be paid back?
That is correct.
So I didn't do too well in calculus and I didn't take accounting. So isn't that a debt, a liability?
It is a liability, uh, but the state, when they give you those loans, they take the position that they're, they're giving you those loans to assist with the deficit. So it has to be included as a revenue.
But does it also have to be included as a deficit, liability, owed somewhat?
On the state budgetary basis of accounting, they do not require it to be reported as a liability.
So, and this is, and again, I'm not saying concrete, you're following the state formula, right?
Correct.
But the state formula is an interesting gig if you will. Because they give us five, how many millions do we got last year? 5.6 million. You include it in your revenue, but you don't include it in the deficit li, or the liability section.
That's correct.
Does that make any sense to you?
From an accounting, from a generally accepted accounting principle standpoint, it is not.
Okay.
So in, in your report, there's really two methods of accounting. In this report, there's a state budgetary basis of accounting, which allows you to report those state aid advances as revenue and lower your deficit.
Is it your understanding that the district has to pay back those state loans?
That's correct.
Okay, continue.
So, uh, budgetary, the state recognized deficit on a budgetary basis of accounting was about 4.3 million dollars. But in addition to that, to answer your cumulative question, in 2016-17, the district received about 5.6 million, like we said. In previous years, there was another $4 million received in the previous year. So your total that as of June 17th that you owe back to state is about 8.7 million bucks.
So we're clear. The district has borrowed 8.7 million bucks from the state. Is that, I get that right?
That's the remaining balance of what was, you, you paid some.
You paid some.
Yeah, you paid every year they required to pay, I believe, 1/10 back over 10 year period.
For this, for this year, we received another 8.6 million in state aid advances.
So again.
They don't have, because they're, they're, they're ordered at the June 30th.
Being real simple, being real simple, because I'm a simple person. The eight million plus another eight million means 16 million. Do you know about the eight million we took this year?
I don't know. Our report is as of June 17th, so anything else?
We took eight million this year?
We got an advance of 8.6 or 8.
So it's really like we owe the state now 16 million or something. Is that right? Okay, just wanted to do this little stat.
So it is a good point. Like I said, the state, but the state recognized your deficit to be this 4.3 million, but in addition, you do still owe 8.7 million dollars to the state, which is being repaid back. You have to budget that amount, 1/10 of that amount every year. And should they give you more, that payback.
We don't want any more loans. We don't want any loans. Let me ask the business administrators. How much will we pay back monthly for the state loans?
Choose the 1/10 of what you have.
Well, I, again, I'm not going to sit here and use my so's now.
The first one was 5.6, so it would be 560,000. The other one was 4.5, so it would be 450,000. The next would be 8.6, it would be 860,000.
My kids would probably show me how to use this to add these numbers up. How much are we paying? Well, I ask you, your daughter, how much will we pay back each month? If someone, give me a number, this past year through June 2017. How much monthly will we pay back to the state?
I believe for the whole year of 16-17, because they do it on an annual basis. I assess you what you pay back on an annual basis, which was roughly a million dollars paid back in 16-17, because you've received almost $10 billion before this new money in 17-18, which is not included.
So let me, Mr. Baker or Campbell?
They, they take it out of, out of the state aid, it's an deduction under state aid.
So how much now monthly? Someone from the business office, please help me, please help the board, because that's one of the questions they wrote here. How much are we paying back monthly? We're not even paying back. How much are they, the state, taking from our state aid monthly instead of giving it to our children? How much are they taking before we even see it? As, let's say, well, I don't know, last month or December?
Well, it's close to a million dollars. Basically what happens is if I can.
Wait, give me one second. It's about $15 million of loans. Uh, again, this is mine and I, Mr. Baker taught me well, so it's 15 million bucks we owe. Do we agree on that? No.
No, because the eight, the eight million that we got, the 8.6 million for this year, there's no repayment on that, it's not for spot on.
Okay, so we have like one year pass on the eight million. Even though Mr. Schafter, when he last showed, told us that there seems to be an issue about a million or something. Remember, I, I do listen to this though.
It has to do with the prior loan payments, the, um, 4.6 and 5.6 million dollars that we weren't supposed to pay those loans back this year.
So we're passing on the loan payment. So our auditor and the VA is free that we paid back last year a million bucks to the loans. Is that, is that right?
In 16-17.
Right. And if I'm following this, next year, we're going to have to pay 2 million.
According to the repayment schedule that the state monitor showed me, unless the state gives us a deferment again for next year, we're looking, we, we may have to put into our budget close to 2.1 million dollars.
To pay them back?
To pay them back to the three loans.
Do they charge us interest? No, okay, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Uh, moving on to the smaller report and in the orders management report, we did have a, a handful of recommendations in that report which required corrective action. The big, I think the biggest area we probably had during the order was in the payroll. We had, we had several different issues come up in the payroll department. So I think of all the recommendations, that, that was probably the one that kind of stood out. Obviously after deficit, which has to be funded, that was required to show up as a recommendation under, under state statutes. But our second, uh, more significant finding related to payroll, we had numerous issues in the payroll department that occurred during the 16-17 year for whatever reason. Uh, so we have a recommendation there with regards to that. But all in all, I think for, for the number of recommendations that are in there, I believe if you look at the past audits, it has been reduced, uh, the number of recommendations and the severity of the recommendations. Uh, obviously the, the deficit is a major finding and recommendation and the payroll is, it was a pretty significant issue during the 16-17 year. So I don't know, we have to take any questions? I mean, that kind of, there's the financials in a nutshell and.
Through the, uh, through the chair, do our vice chair, this chair stepped out. Do, uh, any questions of the, uh, anyone, any questions? You did get the order recorded in advance. Is this order report hopefully available for the public? Is it on our website or how does the public get to see a copy of this? Tonight, that's tomorrow. Now that, okay. And AMR, okay, so we'll be on the website tomorrow. Uh, Jim is not here, but someone will do that, okay? Any questions, because the board, you did have the, any questions?
You started off by saying we have $300,000 revenues.
Revenue.
Well, we do, because the gig is you don't have to count your loans. It's a great system. You could spend money you don't have. Say you're in the black, but really in the red, because you don't, you get the loan which has to be paid back, but you don't have to count them when you say we have revenue. And I'll tell you, that's the state system, right?
Yeah, if you didn't get that 5.6 million dollars during 16-17, you wouldn't have ended up in a 100% if you had shorted, because you got that loan from that, that.
I'm saying we have that loan, we, we got a loan, but now we have the extra, what happened with that?
Now, the, if I can understand, the 300 grand plus is after you consider all the loan money. So we have it, but we really don't have it. This is Disney World.
Basically, in other words, basically you got the extra money from the loan money, right? That was counted as revenue. Now, that amount of revenue exceeded expenditures of last year by $300,000. So the cumulative deficit was reduced by $300,000.
What, did you review anything about state approved schools for the disabled? Did you, anything come out? I, I don't, I don't know, because I'm new to this time around. Do you review like payments or?
Yeah, well, uh, well, we don't hone in specific on that, but we pick sample, you know, several samples of all your different areas and we think we look at payments and invoices.
Was there any issue with the payments and invoices?
None.
Okay. Do you look at non-public accounts?
Yes.
Okay, were there any issues with those? Do you look at transportation? Any issues with those?
There were none.
So where, here's a, the audit recommend, if this is the right word, did the audit recommendations go down from last year 15-16 to 16-17 or up or stayed the same? The number. I'm always told by Schafter and Zara, well, we're doing better here. Again, I'm not debating, but did a number of audit recommendations from 15-16 to 16-17 go down? That's what I.
I believe it. I don't have last year's written, but I've confirmed one out of two, two times.
I thought they went from 27, 9 to 6.
That sounds about right. Yeah, I don't have last year's, but I think you have to go from a pretty high amount to a lower amount to a lower.
Did you have any questions that weren't answered for you?
I have a question. Um, from last year, the payroll account, um, and what were the recommendations that were found? Was this less this year than the year before? The, um, deficiencies you found with the payroll for the last.
What page are you looking at?
I'm looking at page three in this. The, um, findings of the audit for the payroll account.
Specific to the payroll?
Yeah, page three. Is this less than the prior year?
Prior, um, I don't recall having issues in the payroll in the prior year. I mean, if they were, they served, it wasn't, wasn't to this significant of a level.
So what the Vice President is asking is you found issues with the payroll that didn't exist the prior year?
That's correct.
Okay, now let me ask our VA or system VA, what in English, please? Or whatever language, just simple. What were the issues with payroll and what's the cause? Who knows that?
It was a staff issue.
I don't know what that means. Do you know what that means?
Um, okay. Overpayment of amount, uh, money that was being paid, um, duplicate payments, that, that was a staff in issue?
What happened was. Employee payroll deduction. The payroll clerk that was there was then promoted to the payroll manager and it really wasn't enough experience in the payroll area to, to handle that. And that, that was the issue there.
One person to authorize the signature.
That was just computerized checking, that's been changed.
Keep on going, Vice President.
Yeah, this is, this is kind of disturbing. You have money being paid to someone, medical benefit, they're not in the district anymore.
Three to two.
Yes.
What page are you reading?
I'm on three.
Who wants, who wants?
I got it, I just wanted to want to.
Duplicates payments on certain employee payroll deductions for name?
How have we corrected this?
Yes.
We're looking, you know, it's great to say climate pride is back, but if we don't have money, we can screen that till tomorrow, do you know? So how are we, how are we correcting these issues?
In November, there was a payroll manager hired that had significant, uh, more experience than the required clerk did, and she's working there. And she's currently working there and there's, and those issues have been clarified.
And with pensions too, like the overpayment of pension and refunds and all of that?
That's correct.
That's this person's job?
Yes.
Has this person who's new, who comes with a lot of experience, does she know about these issues?
That's correct.
Okay, so this way we, because I'm sure that affects employees.
That's absolutely correct.
It affects everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Anything else?
I have a question. You know, this 127, 127,000 and the 61,000, are we getting, trying to recoup any of that money?
What page are you on, sir? It's a, it's on three. What page?
Three.
Three, I just want to go, what's with that? Uh, what, what is, what is Mr.?
That's the overpayment.
Did we get that back? You know, wrote your about, or you're speaking?
Talking about the first two bullets. The first two bullets, um, the first two bullets weren't really overpayments. What happened in the first two bullets is that the account actually ended the year of the deficit.
So how does an account be in deficit and, and us not know about it? Or did we know about it?
What, what had happened was the payroll manager at that time took the deductions for, uh, say the first payroll period and the second payroll period and made a contribution or made the payments based on that. And then there was a cleanup payroll that was done toward the end of the fiscal year. Then what they did was they took that thing and then paid from the month, which included prior to payments on the basic, so that money actually came back to us, uh, the month later, sometime after that, and I believe Rob confirmed that as well.
Let me ask you, you do many districts, correct? As a matter of fact, you run another district as well. Yes. By the way, we come first now, okay? Unless we get a half price. Uh, but, um, question, are we doing good here? Like if you compare us to like, what's your, like all this paperwork and you kill a cow here. Uh, are we doing better, are we doing worse?
I think there's been significant improvement in, in the recommendation side. I mean, obviously financially, you, you discussed those districts. From a recommendation standpoint, I think you could see from the number of recommendations, like we just said, 20 down to the nine, to seven, I mean, the number's going down. And I think this severity of the recommendation, I mean, this one is a significant one. The deficit is a significant one, but the other ones in there are more general type comments, you know, we put it in there because whatever happened, happened, they correct action. Uh, so I think for the size of your district, to have this number of recommendations with only two material, yeah, I mean, it's relatively, I don't want to say a small amount because any recommendation is of any concern, but for the size of your district, I would say it's, it's improving.
And is your assignment now done? You've completed the work for 16-17?
Correct.
This has been submitted or it's going to be submitted? How does this work with the state, when do they get this? Do they have this?
They, they have, yes. It's due on December.
So what is, what is the board being asked to vote on tonight?
You should accept the order.
Accept it, but it's.
And corrective action plan.
Oh, there's a corrective action plan?
The corrective action plan is a required action plan.
Okay, do we have a copy of the corrective action plan? Okay, bear with that.
It went out of the package. I believe it was also available to board members as well. The synopsis of order.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The first two pages.
Oh, yeah, I did that, okay. I want them to know when they're asked by the public, because they work for the public. I work for them, so you got that, okay. Do you have anything else? Have VAs, system VAs, superintendent, purchasing agent?
Well, that's bullet, it says three instances of a low or employee district needing to receive medical benefits, but that not mutually, what, what was the situation?
What page do you want?
He said seven three.
Oh, page number three.
What happens there is we look at employees who, uh, are no longer with the district, whether they retired or whether they were retired for some reason. And we look at, uh, health benefits and medical bills for the months after they retire, to make sure that they were timely removed, so you're not still paying a premium for the people who aren't here. We did find a three instance where people who had left the district continued to be on, you know, continued to be on.
They were supposed to be removed, is that...?
Yeah, you're supposed to be removed, you know? They give you some kind of leeway, maybe a month or two, bring them down.
What was the time about that they had been gone and we still paid for them?
I don't remember, but it was more than, more than the state, you know, timeline, they gave for 30 to 60 days, it was probably several...
Give me one second, we're just looking. Here's the corrective action plan, so the corrective action plan is two pages. This was put together by the superintendent in the business office or who was it?
Business office.
Okay, so the corrective action plan, um, which was part of the synopsis of the order report. Uh, let me just make sure there's nothing being dumped on the board here. Now, okay, we'd ask, um, had this been posted also, please, so the public can bear a corrective action plan, these two pages, which deals with the fine, you guys have said you've been addressing that, right?
Correct.
So it addresses the audit recommendations.
But this will be put on the website, because we, the board who works for the public wants the public to know, right? Yeah, okay, so, well, that's good, okay, so, thank you. Okay, we're ready, thank you. Do any more questions? Anything else you need from the board of the district? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
I'll wait, question?
Um, you say recommendations, internal controls, can you elaborate on what you consider?
For, for the payroll?
Yeah.
Uh, well, page 3 really, the recommendation is really one general recommendation on the whole payroll department. Page 3, that's why we showed you the bullets.
Yeah.
To show you what the individual, uh, findings that we had were, what happened. So in lieu of writing recommendation for each one of those bullets, you know, in general, we do one, you know, one big one to say that's on the total of the whole department being asked to make sure these bullet items are correct.
Rob, I just have one question over here too. What do you attribute the, say, the swing in the audit findings and things like that, going from 27 down to, say, 6 and stuff like that? Do you have anything that attributes to that, um, say, change in philosophy?
Well, I mean, you took corrective action on the previous recommendations. I mean, on the last page, where we listed recommendations, there was, there was only two repeats from the previous year. And those are kind of ones that are out of your control, the deficit, obviously, which is a piece of the issue which, which keeps recurring. And then the other one, which is a repeat, was your amount of money you're holding in your food service account, uh, which you're working on, I believe, to, to lower that amount. Uh, so I think the number of recommendations being there's no repeats, it means you're correcting, you know, whatever occurred in the audit in the previous years. You know, when stuff is coming up or coming here, stuff, correcting the buyer ones will, you know, usually keep your number of recommendations down because you're obviously correcting issues that are more...
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hager.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hager. Thank you. That would be next.
Uh, right now I have, I need, I have corrections to the agenda. There's a one-page correction to the agenda.
Okay. What do you want to do?
I want a motion to accept the corrections to the agenda.
Which is one page, which is page, uh, superintendent's item page 8, item 17, add Gina Sinatia Chaparral, page 11, tonight one. Page 11, remove 30, add personnel, page 22, appointment number two, change effective to February 1st. Page 26, resignation 6, effective date of February 1st, add remove certificated appointment number four on Amy Mann.
Motion?
Motion, second? Roll call.
Mrs. Blackett? Mrs. Alves? Mr. McDamon?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tenler?
Yes.
Mr. Trice here? Mr. Jackson Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Now I have, I need a motion to approve the additions to the agenda. There's additions number one.
The additions to the agenda were, um...
Single page?
Okay, now that was number two. Seven pages called addition to the body.
Yeah.
Uh, we just, we got that prior to tonight.
Yep.
It does include some appointments, a social studies teacher for high school, salary adjustments, appointments, other things about the security bid, where the board is not accepting either bid for the security. And so page two, that is for the non-public grant, and that is regarding non-public money. Uh, also some teachers and people going to like staff workshops, so you all got that. Is there a motion?
Wait, 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 there's a, number two, which is a single page.
A single page, hiring a Michael DiMartolo as a teacher at Bar and Oatry School. So do you need a motion to add this?
Well, it's gonna be a motion to approve the additions to the agenda, 1 and 2.
As well as the agenda?
No, this is just the addition to approve the agenda.
Vice President made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, who wants it? Okay, Ms. Gonzalez, roll call.
Mrs. Blackett? Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. McDamon?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tenler?
Yes.
Mr. Trice here? Mr. Jackson Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Next.
Next, I need a motion to approve the executive minutes for October 8th, November 15th, December 11th, December 21st, and January 16th. Those are the executive...
And I just want to make sure, uh, Ms. Beanzante and, uh, DeZamba and Kevin, these were, were the discussion that, uh, the changes, the corrections? I, two seconds, yes, oh, yes, okay, motion, second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Blackett? Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, this is, for the meetings you were at, yes? For the meetings you were at, yes?
Yes.
Mr. McDamon?
He, he wasn't here, so he can vote. He can vote as a part of Disney World, but he's not part of it.
Okay, he's an abstention. Mr. Newhouse? Mr. Rodriguez?
It's like bar and...
Mr. Tenler?
Yes.
Mr. Trice here? Mr. Jackson Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Next, we have the public meeting minutes for...
May I ask, Chairman, can we vote on the entire agenda now, Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Okay, is that okay?
Is, which, which agenda are you talking about? Are you talking about the public meeting, or are you talking about the...
The whole thing.
So you're, what you're voting on then is the public meeting minutes on 12, 1, 11, 17. You're voting on the special, the special meeting minutes, 12, 21, 17. You're approving the business agenda, and you're also approving the superintendent's agenda.
Motion.
That's what you want to do.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Rodriguez?
And that also includes the additions and the corrections. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, okay, is that what you got?
I got an answer, okay. Mr. Blackett? Abstention.
Okay, he's...
Mr. McDamon? Mr. McDamon?
Mr. McDamon can vote on those items other than those that involve any paper or involvement prior to him here, as well as with the child's role.
Do I have to repeat that?
No, you just have to say yes to what I just said.
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tenler?
Yes.
Mr. Trice here?
You know, it's funny, if all those members are not here, I think, are you thinking they're gonna pop up at that year?
Sometimes you never know, but it's on the record.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Jackson Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
We have, we have any committee reports?
Seeing none.
None.
Any correspondence and communications?
Seeing none.
None.
Any recommendation to the public?
We readily recognize, I'll be asked when Reverend Wilson, I'd be, uh, to not want to speak.
I just wanted...
Someone is approaching, did you sign up?
No.
Okay, this is your first meeting?
No.
Welcome. We usually, if the public knows this, you need to sign up to speak. However, we've done this for all people, all religions, colors, genders, and everything else. Uh, Mr. Bender, since this is his first time, right? He's asked, can we allow it, but again, in the future, we've done this other times, first timers can, we want to be careful. So we will allow this, right? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
So you need to say who you are.
Harry Berkowitz.
And... And you need to say, okay, and you have three minutes, which I don't do minutes here. Uh, is that Harry Berkowitz?
Ah, ah, yeah.
Okay.
Also, business administrator for our security, and I'm just coming in regards to the bid that, hopefully, we change it now.
Well, again, let me, let me, before you hope, we don't want to hope.
Okay.
Let me tell you what has happened. The board has rejected both bids, what, and is considering going out to a new RFP, which will take into consideration there this factor, but if you want to add something, which I'm not telling you should or shouldn't, but then you have two minutes left.
Stop, I want your call.
Oh, okay, thank you. How fair.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make two points, I feel that's very important to keep in mind. Uh, when you have a security company, that, we have a lot of kids that stay, and I feel that the, the two parts to it is making it a good security company to take, to help to take care of our kids. And I think, number one is obviously you need a qualified staff to take care of, to make sure that they know what they're doing, and they find the right guards, and they create the right system for the guards to make sure they're overseeing the school properly. Number two, there's, you need a staff that cares, and someone that's actually going to administer everything that's necessary. And I think that's, that's equally, if I may say, equally important, because I think this, I want to give an example of a contract that we think over from a very, very large company in the Lakewood, Lakewood Housing Authority right here in Lakewood, that has a senior high rise that needs security.
You do that company, you do the Lakewood...
Yeah, yeah, and, and we fulfilled it from a very large company, and they were extremely unhappy with them, there were people not in the department.
They have to do.
That extremely happy with us, the guards simply weren't showing up for the other company. So you could have a great company that's very, very, has been in business for 25 years, but they're a national company, they just pop a guy in and just can create a lot of dollars now.
We hear you.
What?
You know, we have great guys here too, we have our head of security.
Yeah.
He's a little bit jolly, but we have two police officers, thank you, let's have a hand for our police officers. Anything else?
I'm sure Mr. Silwell will...
Yes, Mr. Silwell is right now reserving. Go ahead.
So, so I think that, that's, that's, that's been true before. And so then I, and it's, and it's just, and you've just been to point that a little bit more, just to show, actually, we had, we, we first of all have a whole incentive program, ours, to make, make sure they don't show up, in the case they don't show up, that we, that, that, you know, there's no such thing as not showing up, they have bonus, and they have a whole system. But in, in the mere circumstance, once that guard didn't show up, Chief Wilson and Mr. Robinson...
We, let me do this, we, thank you.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
But I think this is important to keep that, the second point I want to make, can I just, I just go on?
Yeah, you have, two seconds left.
Okay, the second thing is, is that what, but regards to the experience in security, I think it's very important, I, to have a staff to be secure and, and have this experience, and I think that, that, if, let's say you have a new guy who's doing the business, that buys a whole company, so that, that don't help you to know what they're doing, right? But if you have people who's been in the business for many, many years, like we have with Chief Wilson, and you have, um...
Yeah, Chief Wilson did raise us at a prior meeting, he is a great man.
Yeah, but he doesn't have, and so he, he brings from, from the police environment, we also have a new guy, Kevin Craig, who's now owner, owns the business, Chief Wilson brought him on.
Kevin Craig, does he have any school-based experience?
Yeah.
And is he a partial owner?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then he's, he's, has, has very significant experience in, in schools. So the, even though the company itself may not have it, I think it's an important point, that, that sometimes...
That, that you extend your time.
We thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, round of you, we praise you, God bless you, okay?